And welcome to the first Mount Mansfield meeting by Uden School Board meeting of the twenty-five, twenty-six. Four years, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five. This is twenty-six. Um, and I'm going to run through the agenda. Um, we're just gonna start with the agenda you do it now and the vocal follow. We have time after that for the community comments. Will approve the board meeting minutes from June tenth. Uh, we have a presentation from the search consultant we hired for the superintendent search. Um, if you need one, you can have an executive right there and then there's time for other members to act. Um, before we move on to vocal, I just like take a moment. Um, just a moment of silence because there was sad news of the Johnson family officially. Two days ago, on his birthday. Infolences and thoughts first. Uh, whatever anybody wants. Um, we have. One board member remote, it looks like right now, and two remote. Oh, great. Oh, can we? Can you make this, I guess, okay, great. I'm glad you can see that. I don't see you good enough, but.
A ten member.
Perfect. The sun, the brightness. Um, and eight here, so we have a four, so chat, who would invite me to all that. To take Tara Arneson. Kevin Campbell. You know, see us. Evan Chandler here. Allison Conan. Gail Conley.
Here.
Stephen Diggio. Tom Firstville. Edie Grayling. James Granzel.
Here.
Susan Lillik. Sandra Lamont.
Here.
Ethan Mauer.
Present.
Stuart Morjo. Katie Nelson, yes, and Lisa Pollak.
Present.
And Abby Laney. I'm Steve Grant. Um, Abby will be joining us on the remote hand thirty-three minutes, so, okay. Um. Community comments. I don't see any created to ever secure. Uh.
Edie.
Folks have said they will be watching the meeting after and they have comments for after. So, um, did folks join, um, with community comments? We can come back to them. The board is.
Edie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, just want to let you know the audio is, I guess, not as good as it normally is. I don't know if, uh, that helps at all with troubleshooting, but at least for me, I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
All right, Jeff is gonna see if. Um, modifications. As I'm talking, is it getting better?
Um, you stopped talking.
I stopped talking. Is that better? Jeff was making changes as I was talking.
Yeah, that works better for me. Thank you.
That's better. Okay, great. Um, thank you for, uh, giving us that heads up. Appreciate that. Um, minutes. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our June tenth meeting? So moved. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Lisa, for seconded. Um, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of approving? I'll take a thumb or a hand or a some kind of notification?
I.
Thank you. Uh, any opposed? And any extensions? Okay, thank you, unanimous approval. Um, at this point in the meeting, we're running a little ahead, which gives us a little bit of cushion. Um, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Hank Harris of Human Capital Enterprises. Um, Hank has met with the HR committee, um, uh, last year. Um, the HR committee, so. January, February, um, interviewed, uh, three different, um, search consultant groups to help us find a superintendent, a new superintendent for the next year, and we, um, decided to go with Human Capital Enterprises. Um, Hank will tell us about more about the search process and the way they do searches. Um, and we're really excited to be working with, um, Hank and Kathleen, who can't be here tonight. Uh, Hank, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, and thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, and hello, board, and, uh, what a privilege it is to, uh, be with you tonight. Um, we've been, we've been gearing up for this for a few months now, but I think this is our first time together as, uh, consultant with board, and I'm looking forward to get to work with you, to get to know you, and to serve you and your community, uh, with this very important upcoming leadership transition. Can you hear me okay? I, I was, I was grateful to Kevin for pointing out that, uh, the audio was, was maybe not quite where I, but I think it's working, but I want to make sure people can hear me okay.
In the room, it's great. How is it, um, for folks who are remote?
Crystal clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Um, I, I noticed with the owl, I probably won't know your names when you talk and, and the, although I appreciate you having name tags, I, I'm an older guy and my eyes are so sighted and so. But I want to get to know you while we, while we interact, if you wouldn't mind stating your name when we engage, that will get, give me an opportunity to get to know you better individually as well collectively. Um, I'll do a brief introduction. Uh, I grew up. If there's, is there some feedback?
There, it's just your.
Several.
It's your vocals break every once in a while, so we're.
I sit back.
We have new owls this year, yes, and so we're doing a little troubleshooting.
Okay, perfect.
We have better technology.
Wonderful, wonderful. All right, let me know if, uh, if you need me to repeat anything. Um, so, uh, I grew up, uh, down the road. I grew up in, uh, in Hartford, Connecticut. Um, you may know that if, if you read any, any, the, the, uh, initial proposal, but you might not have read that, so I'll just tell you a little bit about my background. Grew up in, in Hartford, not the Hartford, Vermont, the other Hartford down in Connecticut. Uh, spend, we, 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 we had a, uh, we had a little time share up in Stowe, and so we would spend, uh, one week, um, typically the week before the holiday break. They're most, most winners. Um, and then in my twenties, I, uh, decided to move to the Pacific Northwest, and I spent most of my career in the Portland, Oregon area. Uh, I was a teacher, I was an assistant principal, I was a principal, and I then was an HR director, and, um, I think that might have been of all the roles I played, I think that might have been maybe the, the place where I felt I made the best contributions or the most contributions. Uh, I served as HR director for three different school districts, um, a small, a medium-sized, and a large one, uh, all in the Pacific Northwest, and about, uh, now it's a, I think it's twelve years ago, um, I started the firm, which is Human Capital Enterprises, uh, which is a search firm focused, uh, exclusively in the public education sector, uh, superintendent searches as well as cabinet-level searches. And, uh, we've been doing this, as I say, for twelve, thirteen years. We're really deeply wedded to the work and, uh, invested not only in the year that we're going to work together, but in the long-term health and success of your district with whoever is your new leader. So I'm really grateful, uh, and honored to have this opportunity, and I'm speaking also for my amazing cohort, who's not with us today, but you'll, you'll get to know her as well, Kathleen Rodden North, who is, uh, who's amazing, um, and we also have a support person in Western Massachusetts, and so, uh, you might get to know Ben as well over the course of the search. Walk you through an agenda in a little bit, but we want to do other introductions.
So, um, wouldn't it be helpful for you to have every board member introduce themselves, um, in this meeting?
Love that, yeah.
Great, um, then Susan, we're gonna start with you.
Okay. Hi Hank, I'm Susan Lilick. We, I think we met, um, at, at the HR committee a couple times. I have on the, been on the board for, um, a, a long time, about eighteen, seventeen or eighteen years with a, with a two-year gap in there, so. Um, and, um, yeah, I'm a clinical psychologist. I have two college-age, uh, daughters who both graduated from the district, and, um, excited to be working with you.
Thanks, Susan. Good to see you again.
Hello, Matt. It's Hank. I'm Katie Nelson. I am, um, I'm just starting this second term.
Okay.
Of my school board service, and so it's my fourth year. Um, I am the chair of the Community Engagement Committee. So I know that we'll be working together, and I have, um, two kiddos that are in middle school in our district, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Uh, hi Hank, Heather, Chad, I'm here. Uh, I met you on the, uh, HR committee. Uh, this is my third year on the board. I have two kiddos in the district where I live, regular Richmond, um, in a middle school. And, yeah, excited to do this.
Great. Good to see you again.
See you again.
I'm Lisa Pollak. Um, this is my third year on the board. I'm from Underhill. Uh, I have one college-age kid who went through the district and am also the chair of the Finance Committee.
Awesome. Lisa, right?
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Hi Hank, it's Tara Arneson, um, Vice Chair and part of the HR Committee, so we've met quite a few times. Two kids here at the middle school, and I'm starting my fifth year on the school board.
Good to see you, Tara.
Hi Hank, Ethan Mauer. Really don't know the number of years I've been on the board. I haven't figured that out at some point, a couple of turns. Um, and I was on the board pre-merger as well, um, shortly. Um, I have a daughter in eighth grade here at Camel's Hump. Uh, I'm in, um, at the educational field, I'm the co-director for one of the adult education providers for the state, and, yeah, excited to put this process going.
Awesome. Nice to meet you.
Hi Hank, Sandra Lamont. I just started on the board in March. Um, but I've been an educator for forty years and retired, so now I have some time to do this. But my two sons went through the, the school, school district here, and, uh, happy to be on the board and happy to be working with you.
Wonderful. Nice to meet you. Welcome aboard, Sandra.
Hi, my, my name's Gail Conley. I've been on the board, uh, for a few years. I'm a retired administrator, and I'm enjoying being the most, the oldest member of the board.
And Gail is also a former superintendent for the district a few years ago.
Yeah, great.
Edie Granning, we've met a few times, but for everyone, I will, um, I've been on the board for a little over ten years, twelve years maybe. Um, I, um, had kids, both graduated from the district. I was involved in all of the parent groups possible while my kids were in the younger grades, because it was really important for me to be engaged and involved in the schools. I just love our district, and I'm really invested in making sure we have, um, the best person to take us into the next ten years, let's say. Let's go with that.
That's good. Thanks, Edie.
Uh, hi Hank, I'm Rebecca Tebow, Director of HR. We've talked a few times, and I'm also a member of the HR Committee Liaison, um, with the board and the administrative team.
Great. Good to see you, Rebecca.
Hello, I'm Pat. I'm the Board Secretary.
Hi, Pat.
And also. And also a staff here in the middle school.
Great. Nice to meet you.
Uh, great. Kevin, and then Jimmy, and then Steve.
Sorry, don't have my camera on. Hank, we, we met a few weeks ago. I'm on the HR Committee. I've been on the board for a dozen or so years. Um, and, um, yeah, nice to meet you again.
Yeah, likewise, Kevin.
Hi Hank, I'm Jimmy. Uh, I'm probably, I think, the newest member on the board and probably the youngest. Uh, I got two little ones, first and second grade, and I would be at the meeting, but I'm at football practice right now, so. Um, yeah.
Nice to meet you, Jimmy.
Nice to meet you, Jimmy.
Hi, I'm Steve Diglio. I also have two kids in the, uh, the school district, uh, a little bit older than Jimmy's. Uh, mine are eighth grade and a sophomore now, um, so they're, they're flying through the system real quick. Uh, part of the reason I'm not there is we're getting them ready for back to school, so.
Yeah. Yeah, great. Nice to meet you, Steve. Thank you. Yeah.
And we have three board members who aren't with us at the meeting tonight.
Okay. Gotcha. All right, well, thank you for taking the time for that. Um, and was there anybody else? Did we hit everybody?
That's everybody.
That's everybody.
Unless you want to meet Jeff.
Just trying to make this happen.
Yeah, all right, well, let's, um, Edie, are you okay if I just walk through the agenda? Are you, can I leave that?
I think that would be perfect.
Okay. Um. So if you look at the agenda, uh, and if my head looks like it's looking off in the distance, it's only because I'm using a couple monitors, so it's not that I'm just peering into. If you look at.
We're good. Sorry.
You're good. Okay, yeah, let me know, because I can't, I don't see what you have on your screen. Um, so I want to spend time, I'm, you'll see we have thirteen agenda items, and, uh, the one that we will spend the most time on is actually the one we're up to, which is number two. Some of the other agenda items will go rather fast, some of them will need a bit of a little time, but the search timeline, um, serves to do a few purposes. Uh, I'd like to walk you through, um, so in a moment, I'm gonna ask you to put up the document that's linked to that. Actually, let's do that now. If you would, if you would, maybe, is Jeff, would you link to that search timeline?
Oh, Kevin popped it up.
There we go. And let me pull up mine and give me a moment. I thought I had it open, then they don't, so, um. Okay, here.
And just let me, let me, Hank, this is, um, I guess I should have presented it this way. The HR Committee worked with Hank and Kathleen to put, put a proposal together on what we think would be the best way for us to afford the full board. We would like to approve it officially tonight, and there are a couple of things that there are, maybe one thing that there's a question about, but for the whole part, we just want the full board to be aware, engaged, and have many opportunities to ask questions and understand this, and then get approval tonight on if this is, if this makes sense going forward, and we'll explain why the timeline is the way it is, um, as we go through.
Great. Thank, thank you. I appreciate that framing, so I'm going to speak to it as though it is this, but it's really as Edie says, it's, this is all either coming from the, most of it is coming from the HR Committee based on some recommendations, or in some cases, the HR Committee really collaborated to think through. Some of it is written to the contract that we have with you, but it is all in draft, so if there is a piece or pieces that need to be thought about differently, this is the time and the moment, um, to do that. Um, so I'd like to walk through that. Um, as you see, we start tonight on the twenty-sixth, and your new superintendent will assume responsibilities at the bottom of the sheet, July first. But the expectation and aspiration would be that you are finished. You are finished or ninety percent finished by the end of February. So hold, so sort of sit with that, um, and let's talk about what is, what does the search process look like? Uh, after tonight, um, the first phase that we enter is, we call usually the engagement phase. It's our, um, opportunity and desire to learn Mount Mansfield as deeply and as, uh, quickly and as deeply, um, as we can, uh, in order to do the work of search. Um, we won't, we won't ever know MMUUSD to the level that you board members and staff in the room know it, right? We don't go to work there every single day, but at this moment in time in the history of the district, at this really important time, because you're beginning a leadership transition after a very successful and long run of a sitting superintendent, we need to, we, the consultants, need to deeply understand as, as quickly and as in-depth as possible, your organization, and I'll just say why, even though it's probably obvious why. Um, one is, we are going to be, um, shortly thereafter, recruiting candidates for this position. We, of course, need to speak with some degree of knowledge and confidence about what is the organization? What are the, what are the wonderful aspects of the community of the district? What are the opportunities? What are the challenges? Every single school district has them. Um, we want to be knowledgeable about that, and the second part of why we engaged, uh, why we engage is that we will come back to you, a few rows down, on October fourteenth and October twenty-eighth. We will come back to you, um, before the recruitment period, you board, we will come back to you, and we will say, board, based on what we've learned, here is what we think your community or communities, um, wants you, board, to focus on in your search. So we want to be prepared to do that in October, so our two outcomes again is to learn the district as deeply as we possibly can, and also to learn what does your community, the broadest definition of community, students, staff, parents, administrators, community members, parents who don't, community members who don't have children in the district, all of them comprise your community, and we want to be able to represent them, come to you, board, and say, this is what we think, uh, your community is telling us that they want you to focus on. So keep in mind those two objectives, because in the engagement time, um, starts with that second row, which is the one-on-one board conversations, and between Kathleen and myself, we will have one-on-one conversations with. Board member, um, hear your sense of things, your understanding, your dreams, your aspirations, what you would want to see in the resume or profiles of candidates. It starts with that. Um, and then it moves into two other things, uh, the focus group meetings and the online survey. And all three of those things, the board conversations, the focus group meetings, the online survey should all be completed by the end of September, and we easily can do that. Uh, let's talk about the focus group meetings, and let's talk about the online survey. Um, most members of you, so when I say the word "community," again, I mean the broadest definition of community. Everybody who touches or is touched by Mount Mansfield, so really everybody who lives in the community, works in the community, students, staff, parents, that's, that's my definition of community for today. Um, most members of the community will impact the process and help us learn about the district and really, uh, understand the dreams and aspirations for the next superintendent. Most will engage with us through a survey. Um, some will engage with us in focus groups. Our focus groups, um, we have contracted fifteen focus groups. Uh, we keep them small so that we can really go deep into understanding the organization. Probably no more than six focus group for forty-five minutes. That allows us to really get rich and really unpack and understand, uh, some of the dynamics and some of the opportunities, um, that is Mount Mansfield. So those three things, one-on-one board conversations, focus groups, online survey window, allow us, Kathleen and myself, to learn your organization, um, both in terms of being able to be those capable recruiters and also being able to come back to you in October with a document that we call the Next Superintendent Criteria. That's a reflection of what we've learned, and we'll come to you in October and say, board, here's what we think your community would like you to focus on in terms of key criteria, usually about twelve. Um, and we bring that to you as a draft in October. Okay, that was kind of long-winded of me, so I will, um, take a little, and, and any questions so far? And I won't see, so I'm just looking at Edie, and it looks by Edie's face, there aren't any, so, okay. So we'll come to you, as I say, and we actually have the dates, and you think those, I think those are actually board meetings you've already got scheduled, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, so October fourteenth, we bring you the document, and I'm gonna say what I just said. I'm gonna say, board, here's what your community has said they want you to focus on, but board, you are the electeds and you are the decision-makers, and clearly you want to be informed by your public, and you actually are the decision-makers. So we bring it to you as a draft, um, you probably want to hear some public commentary as well from, from folks in your community. Boards often will make some edits, some changes, um, between the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. We'll, we'll figure out how we structure it, whether we'll do more of the wordsmithing or work on it on the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth. But at the end of the meeting on October twenty-eighth, um, we'll ask that the board adopt this next superintendent criteria. And that becomes our marching orders for the recruitment part, as we go out to find candidates that meet as many of these criterias, maybe all of them. Uh, we'll come back to it. In the selection process, we'll draft interview questions that are related to this criteria. Uh, when we're having informal, when we, the recruiters, are having informal conversations with candidates, we're, we're probing those criteria areas. Uh, so that becomes a really significant document, and it's really important, therefore, that a wide swath of the community is engaged in informing that through the online survey in particular, and also through the focus groups. But once you've approved that, on October twenty-eighth, we are ready to start the recruitment period. And while we don't have specific dates in there, I like to post in the early going, and that you're one of the, you're going to be one of the first superintendent searches out there, uh, regionally. Probably posted, uh, Thanksgiving or right before Thanksgiving, and you might say, wow, that sounds really early. It's actually not. It's when folks start to think about next year, and when folks over that long weekend, um, you know, think about really busy, talented people who are doing the work of school leadership. Thanksgiving break might be the first time they have to sort of check some emails or return some phone calls or see what else is out there. So I would be recommending that we, uh, start it probably right before Thanksgiving, and we probably end it during the winter break. Let's just arguably say December thirty-first right now, which for the same reason, um, believe it or not, uh, sometimes in the, in the busy life of a school leader, that winter break with all the family and festivities, things that are going on, is sometimes the opportunity they have to sit down for a couple of hours or, and fill out an application and, and write a compelling, create a, a compelling body of work to represent them as an application. So when we get to the end of the calendar year, we are going to be pretty much finished with the recruiting period, and we move into the selection phase. In January, the first part of the selection phase is the consultants. Now, the way we work our recruitment is we are in conversation with lots of people during that recruitment window. Uh, we're calling people to tell them, hey, have you thought about Mount Mansfield? People will reach out to us and say, I've heard about Mount Mansfield. What can you tell us? We have a really good sense of who the applicants are by the time the window closes, let's say, December thirty-third. And some folks don't ever reach out to us and just apply. There'll always be those folks, and every which way is perfectly fine. Um, right around the thirty-four, right after, let's say, January first, second, third, um, we will engage in, uh, in consultant, we call them the preliminary interviews. Kathleen and I will, and I want to actually throw. This will actually make things a little bit, I think, uh, more tangible as you think about this. Let's imagine, folks, board, let's imagine that there are twenty-five applicants to be the superintendent of Mount Mansfield. We will do our initial screening, and we will say, Kathleen and I will, will, will say to each other, okay, I think there's, I think there's twelve candidates that seem that they have, they meet enough of the criteria, their application package is impressive enough. Of those twenty-five, let's move twelve forward for preliminary interviews. Those twelve, those twelve move forward and are invited to participate in a interview virtual with Kathleen and myself. Uh, one of us is the interviewee, one of us is the note taker. And that's the first part of the selection process, the winnowing of the twenty-five to twelve and the interviews with the twelve. In addition to the interviewing the twelve, we'll also do, we will do a preliminary telephone reference check, um, of those top twelve. Now, I just want to interrupt and say, all twenty-five, you will see all twenty-five applications, uh, the HR Committee will. Um, and we'll have access to all the applications. We think it's helpful to the HR Committee and ultimately to the board that he, as consultants, are doing that first screening and not have, you know, to read all twenty-five applications, when really there are twelve stronger ones. But I, I want to be really clear, we don't, it's not our job to eliminate candidates. So any member of the screening committee or HR committee can look at all twenty-five and can say, hey, what about this person? Should we pull this person back in? Ninety-nine percent of the time, who's ever engaged from the board level in that early process, with only one exception in my career. So I'm not infallible, I'm not trying to pretend I am, but typically, we're, we're seasoned enough and good enough at our work that we can, we can make the cut at the twelve, and it's probably not too controversial. So those twelve candidates engage with us. So those twelve candidates engage with us and then we come forward and we meet. And it's the HR committee's recommendation that the HR committee will be engaged with the first part of the selection process from the board level. What does that mean? That means that the committee will review the, certainly the twelve applications and maybe the twenty-five as well if they'd like to. They will decide in a slate meeting, that's that second row under twenty-twenty-five, whom among the twelve should be around interview. Usually, that's about six, so let's say six. So the HR committee would collaborate with each other. We would give our recommendations, but we are not the decision makers. The HR committee would have read all twelve applications. They come to the slate meeting and through a process that will facilitate, they, they advance six candidates for first round interviews. And then we invite those six candidates for a virtual first round interview. Virtual works really well at this phase in the process. It also saves considerably on travel costs. If people are not local, that could be a lot of travel for six people, especially when there's a fairly short turnaround. By the end of January, we want to have completed those first round interviews. So in, in the, in the chart, it says initial interviews. I'm going to, I'm going to use both initial or first round, it's the same thing. So let's, let's envision that six candidates have been invited for virtual interviews at the, toward the end of January. That is a long, typically, we do that all in one day. Sometimes that's a weekday, sometimes that's a Saturday. We go from morning till evening, interviewing each candidate, debriefing each candidate, and then determining who are the finalists. And at the end of that long day, let's just arguably say, I'm just going to pluck a day out of the calendar, January twenty-eighth. Finalists have been, the, the, the committee has identified the finalists. And February is the month in which finalist interviews take place. Let me pause again and see if there's any questions, clarifications, anything I, I glossed over that I should have gone to more depth.
In the room, we're good?
I have a question. Hank, I can't remember, you may have covered this before, but in terms of the initial interviews with the board, is that the full board?
So the recommendation is that the initial interviews are with the HR committee.
Okay. So what we, what we thought would make sense, and this is where the full board is hundred percent engaged in the criteria and all of that information. So that all of us make sure that we are all in agreement on who we're looking for in a candidate, what qualifications they have, what are their, what's their skill set, what they bring to the table. And then we're going to send Hank and Kathleen off to find us that perfect person, because you're going to bring us that absolutely perfect person, I know it. And then that, they're going to bring us a group of people back to the HR committee. The HR committee will review with them, do some initial interviews, spend a bunch of time. And then when we have a finalist, Hank, you were just about to go to there, right?
Correct.
Are there more questions? Because I just said, we said in about ten seconds. No? Okay, go for it, Hank.
Okay, great, thank you, Edie. So, and thank you whoever asked the question, and I'm sorry that I didn't. I don't know if I saw who asked that question, but thank you for that. Who asked that question?
Susan.
Susan, thank you, Susan. Okay, so let's say it's now January twenty-ninth and there are three finalists. Three is a typical number of finalists. Sometimes it's two, sometimes it's four, sometimes it's one. Three is a good number. Let's, let's hypothesize that they're finalists. One of the conversations, and you might certainly, I, I think you're aware of this, because I think, I think it was chatted at the, at the retreat where I was not present, but Kathleen was there, was the, the benefit, the advantages and the benefits or the costs of publicly announcing the names of the three, three, in this case finalists. And your HR committee's spent a lot of time deliberating about that and has recommended that the names of the finalists are not publicly announced in the press, but are shared only with a small group of stakeholders. And I think, I think this is not new news. I think this is, had been talked about on the fourteenth. There's also an FAQ, if anybody is wondering what's the rationale. It's primary, the number one rationale is it's going to increase your pool, no question about it, in terms of people that are willing to apply for superintendency, knowing that if they don't get it, their name is not going to be announced publicly. And therefore, especially if they're a sitting superintendent, there's not a lot of harm done to the relationships that they currently have in their current superintendent. So I'm going to talk about, that is the plan. And so, so three finalists get a phone call on January twenty-ninth to say, congratulations, you are one of the three finalists for the Mount Mansfield School District Superintendency. Make your plans to come to Vermont. We're going to need you for a few days in February. One of the things I'd like to do before we end this agenda item is actually identify interview dates that everybody can commit to. I know it seems like it's really far off, but people make plans, people take vacations, people have plans. So that is one thing I'd like to do before we finish this agenda item. The notion. Was there a question or was that my?
No, no question.
That was feedback, sorry. So the process would be, so now I want to walk through, what does a finalist experience? A finalist would experience this. They would engage in one or more likely two. The HR committee wanted to look at two community panels. Those might be virtual, those might be in person, we'll figure those out. Those panels have twelve people sitting on them. So if you think about two panels, each of twelve individuals, so twenty-four, community members, they will, those twenty-four will be a microcosm of your larger community. There will be staff on that, there will be administrators on that, there will be parents on that. There may very well be community leaders or electeds and that. I think I left out an important category. Students, staff, parents, community members, labor leaders. These twenty-four individuals divided into two panels will sign confidentiality affidavits. They will in essence say, I want to participate this, I'm committed to participating in this and I will not share any information outside of the panel room. The candidate meets with one panel and then they meet with another panel. That might be the same day, it might be different days, it might be virtual, it might be in person. But the key thing is that those panels are going to do a deep dive with each of the candidates, ask unique questions to each panel and give and prepare feedback that Kathleen and I will facilitate that's really rich and in-depth that will go to you, board members. We will not be asking the panel to rank order them. We will not ask, certainly not ask the panelists to narrow the finalists to a lower number. They are simply, they are simply with, with, I'm saying it differently, they are simply providing deep feedback to the board in correlation to your next superintendent's criteria that you will be able to read, board. And it's, it's pretty in-depth and you'll be able to read that about each of the finalists from both of the panels. And that will be very useful information for you as you move into your interview with the finalists. At every step of the process that I've described so far, at every interview, whether it's the preliminary interview or the first round interview or the two community panel interviews, all of those, I'm an HR guy, so I'm right there with Rebecca. I want to make sure everything is fair, equitable, nobody gets an extra leg up. Every interview is scripted, we take pains to write really thoughtful and good interview questions that are specific to your district and your community. Preliminary interview, first round interview, panel one, panel two, all of those are like that. And then board, when you finally meet your finalists in probably a two-hour interview, I allow myself to be a little bit less of a purist. And I say to the board, and this is the, the board, the full board, board, you get to ask these candidates anything you want. You have a large amount of information from community panels. I haven't even talked yet about telephone reference checks, I'll circle back to that. So you're going to have application materials from each of these candidates. You're going to have panel interviews, feedback, first round interviews, feedback, telephone reference calls, you're going to have a lot of data on each of those candidates. You're going to spend, you're going to spend a few hours prior to each of those interviews going through this quantity of material. And you're going to develop collectively your interview questions specific to each candidate. It's the only time in the process where the questions are specific to each candidate rather than, rather than kind of the same set. And that's a pretty, that's a pretty rich day. Actually, it's usually multiple days. We usually, the way we schedule them is depending on board, whether you prefer to interview in the afternoon or in the evening, it's usually consecutive afternoons or consecutive evenings. So finalists, you would have one come in on Tuesday, one come in on Wednesday, one come in on Thursday. And then Friday, the board would deliberate and figure out where we are. Do we have, do we have somebody that we're rallying together to select or as our top candidate and move into contract negotiations? There's a lot to that finalist week and I'm, I'm feeling like maybe I didn't do total justice to everything that's engaged, involved in that. So let me see what questions, wonderings, thoughts you might have about what I just said with respect to finalist interviews.
This is Heather here. Do I have a question circling back to the panelist interviews? How do we, do we recruit people for those? Do we get, how do we get people to volunteer for those positions?
Yeah, great, great question. Typically, there's a couple of different ways typically, and probably the way I would recommend is that the HR committee itself will work on a categorization. So of the twenty-four, how many students, how many teachers, how many labor partners in terms of roles? And usually, I, I think best practice is that once those categories are identified, it becomes a lottery that anybody in the community who wants to, regardless of how deeply active or not, anybody who's willing to commit to the work, commit to the confidentiality, can put their name in a proverbial hat. It's more like an electronic spreadsheet and names are pulled. That's one way and that's probably eighty percent of the time what boards do. And sometimes there's like a hybrid. So for instance, it might be almost all lottery, but your uni, your teachers' union president might get a spot, might just be given a spot, right? So there might be one or two or three kind of identified in that respect. The other way to do that is to, is to do appointments. And you'd have to, we'd have to work on what that looks like. Is that the HR committee making appointments? It's, it's not a great idea for obvious reasons to do appointments in a public meeting where everybody can see. Right? I mean, that's one of the things that might not sit well with people if their names are being considered. So, so we want to check about, about what would be the right forum where we could do that in a really respectful way to your public while not looking like it's evasive, right? So we would want to have that conversation. But, but because of those considerations, more and more districts do it the first way, which is largely lottery based on category.
And do you find that a lot of people clamor for these panel positions?
Yeah, I, I'd say particularly depends what role. It's funny, as soon as I said, as soon as I started nodding, I started to realize, wait, am I nodding? Is that, so here's what I would say, let me give a better answer to that. We typically don't have any trouble finding parents. Parents typically clamor. Staff, I think in your district, based on what I know about it, is going to be very excited and very interested. I would say sometimes I've worked in districts where there have been a lot of leadership changes over the years and teachers and staff are, I don't want to do this, because this person might not last all that long. But that's not true in Mount Mansfield. You've got great longevity and people want to be very invested in this. Students sometimes are eager to and sometimes not so eager to. We're not looking for students whose parents are signing them up. We're looking for students who are interested on their own account. So sometimes we've had to actually enlist the help of a principal to identify some kids. And sometimes it's just pure lottery with kids, students, I should say.
Yeah, Gail has a question.
Who, who's provided training for the panel before they get into, into the panel business? And how much, what kind of time commitment are you looking forward for people to be actively involved in the panels?
Yeah.
But a clarification before you answer. So we've talked about two different kinds of panels tonight. One panel, the one we're talking about right now, is the one to help us gather information about the district. And the other panel is at the backend after we have our finalists to give us, to give the board feedback that is deeper on that. So this part of the discussion is about the panel who is giving us deep information about the district.
Edie, that wasn't what I was thinking, I'm sorry.
About the, the interviews.
Yeah. You're talking about, you're talking about the interviews now.
Yeah, for people.
Okay, great, because, okay.
That was your question now, right? People who are.
Who are doing the interview. So this is, so this is the very, the last panel.
Yeah.
Great, well then, that's great clarification for me too. Thank you.
But I want to make sure I didn't, I didn't confuse anybody, because Edie, if you have that question, probably others do as well. So we, we might want to circle back to those earlier panels and talk about that as well.
And I know that there is a more detailed sheet in the agenda for tonight about those panels.
So. Yes.
Probably I was thinking about it because I was, was reading through that before the meeting started.
Okay, so we will definitely get that on number six, yeah. Gail, two question. We do, and we do a pretty deep orientation prior to the start of the interview. It's typically a day, so let's say eight to five or nine to five. We try to do that within the workday. Depending on how many finalists, it might take a little bit longer. We are clear with individuals ahead of time what the timeframe is. And we're clear whether employees are able to be subbed out or compensated. So we, we do that piece. It's usually one day, so eight-ish hours with a, with a pretty heavy orientation for the first ninety minutes or so.
So we're asking to be on that panel, a parent who would like to be on the panel, most likely would be encouraged to take the day off of work?
Oh, they would, if they are working person during the day, they would really need to. Yep, they would need to take the day off.
But the students could take their day off without worrying about it.
Other questions?
Well, I was just wondering, I, I like what you're asking, Gail. This is Sandra, thank you. And one of the things that I think probably most people are aware of in our district is the economic disparity of family members. So I'm just thinking about a parent who can't afford to take a day off and yet we really want to engage that group in our district. So I, I think it would be helpful to have some conversation around that right now or at another point. But I would be concerned if, if that's the, the way it's set up and folks just can't take the day off.
Yeah.
I guess, sorry, it's Tarot. If we're doing a lottery, how would we know, right? If people are submitting their information saying, Ray, we put out the qualifications to be a panelist. So you have to knowingly have all of that. And then they submit for this lottery and we just pick it random. I mean, we have to hope that they've made their own arrangements with the understanding they know it's going to be a neat hour day. So I think we have to trust that our community.
But you're saying maybe someone wouldn't even put their name.
That's right.
If you, you know, you're going to have to take your day off and that's not an option for you.
Right, right.
Economically, you might not have.
That's right.
You might feel excluded, yeah. Then I wonder, in the beginning, when we're doing surveys and so on, to kind of lay that out there ahead of time and say, we are going to be coming, looking for panelists. If you don't think this is something you were able to commit to, please give as much feedback as possible on this survey. So let me, Hank, have you encountered this in other districts? And is this something that you have options, solutions for? Or is this a new conversation?
I think, I think that there are often related to ensuring that the panelists are really representative of the community, including the socioeconomic. Are really representative of the community, including the socioeconomic representation. I think that's almost always, I should own, maybe not almost always, but frequently that's something that's raised. How do we ensure that this is not? Our same old group of people that we already hear from a lot, but we're really being into about reaching out. The dilemma about, and that's a really fair question that you raised, Sandra. And as I think about that. You know, could we do a weekend? We, we do interviews on Saturdays. We don't do them typically on Sundays because people don't want to do Sundays. But I would also say that there will be members of the community who are Sabbath observers who might say, well, that's not fair. And so I think you know your community better than we do. So I think. Finding the right. That probably is least, you know, whether that's a weekend or a weekday. I'm not going to rule out doing it two consecutive evenings, but I think that also creates some dilemmas for people because. Who's ever involved in this has to commit to the entirety. You can't be involved in half the interviews, but not the other half of the interviews. So. I think it's a, it's a really good question that I don't know that I have a great answer for. One would meet everybody's needs, but I think you as a, as a. Members, leaders of your community have a better sense than I do as to what are, where would most people find a comfortable sort of zone?
I just throw my two cents on this one thing. I think being out, oh, Ethan Mauer. I think there's one piece about just being out in front and sort of saying this is the commitment that we're sort of saying, and this is what the need is. And, and I don't know how possible this, this might be, but I also consider there might be people that can't actually take time off from work. It's not even a matter of if they were compensated, they're just not able. So I think that. And it's quite possible that they're working evenings, night shift. I mean, there's always going to be a complicating factor. So. I think just being as clear and upfront and trying to provide as many accommodations as possible, whether it's. You know, a literature work, some kind of compensation or stipend, but as long as we say it upfront and clear. And then try to, you know, again, as you said, if the survey becomes one piece, I would just throw in there. The option for people to not have to do an online survey. And then, and then the interview style where if it's one of us or someone else could then record answers for people that maybe don't feel comfortable. Like, I don't like doing surveys in general and I will do one or two word things oftentimes just because I just want to get through it and. I'm fairly comfortable with technology. So I think some people might just be like, it'd be.
Sure. Also not, English isn't her first language and that. Well, and we had talked about this at one of our HR committee meetings because I brought up the same thing. Not everybody has access to the internet.
Right.
Where I think Katie, this is where the community engagement team comes in. And does like, I'm going to be at the library from X time to X time to take your feedback. And be where our community numbers are to like.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, like you don't have to do a paper survey or maybe you do get paper surveys. I don't know how we're, I'm going to leave it up to you.
Sure.
Maybe in the library. Other questions for Hank? Are we? Okay. I think we're ready.
Great. Uh, what is the possibility? We could look at our calendars for February. Now, the school is off the last week in February. I would love if we could settle on. Three or four days. Well, I, I would love if we could start with figuring out which of those. So there's the week of February 10th. And there's the week of February 17th. And maybe we could start by identifying one of those weeks as the week of finalists, depending on making sure people are all, I really want every board member involved in that. So. I would hope we could get unanimous approval.
Um, can you just clarify again, what kind of time commitment we're talking about this week? How many days?
Yeah, great. So I would say, I would say we're looking at, I would say we're looking at three. Days and the amount of time during that day is, I'm going to say three and a half hours. It could be in the. Late afternoon, it could be in the evening.
I will say that I will only be available in the evening.
Realistically, probably better.
Yeah, for most people.
Works outside.
To do evening.
And I know I would prefer the weekend of 17th. That's I'm going to be out of town week of the 10th.
Yeah. And, and we, some of us could be remote and some could be in person, just like, just like we are tonight, right Hank? That's acceptable. Or is this, or is this in-person interviews, face to face?
Oh, I mean, what was, what's my preference? I would love it to be all in person, but you know, you are a larger board. And typically that I work with, and so I know that having 15 people all in the same place may just be something. I can't have. So would I rather you? If I can't, then we can't.
Is it possible to look at the week of, what's that going to be the third? Because you all are gone the week of the 10th. I don't, we can, is that too early?
Or, or let me throw this out there and say Tara, this is dumb. Crazy idea. Crazy. Is going to like the first week of March just pushing it too far? Given that we've already heard from several people who are gone for a week, a week and then school break.
That first week after of March's town meeting.
And so that Wednesday, school doesn't even start again, so that Wednesday. Yeah. If you're trying three consecutive evenings.
Oh, I think we're looking at February though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Competition.
Three days of that.
Our finalists has been competing for another position.
Well, two other in that probably.
By March.
Right, so. All right. So if the, if there is a virtual option to attend, that simplifies things for folks a little bit, right? Or is that, or are you all going to be in places where there's no virtual option or this is?
My schedule's wide, but I'm throwing that out.
But Ethan, I know this isn't important to you, so you don't really.
I'm already out of search credit.
Um, so do we, are we, we have two or three weeks that we're looking at? Sorry. I mean, for the 10th and 17th. Yeah, I'm here too.
I think those are the best. And virtual, it seems like virtual is, we're going to have to have a virtual option. So let's, let's allow for that.
And the first week is too soon of February, just. Being really clear is.
I, I, I think if every, if you were to say to me as a board, we can all be there the week of February 3rd, we can make that work. It's a little ambitious, but we can do ambitious.
Okay. So conflicts, conflicts on any of those weeks. That's what I'm looking for right now.
Okay. Under that second weekend, I'd be going for weddings.
Okay.
But the, for the beginning of the week would be fine.
As of now, I can make anything work. So.
Okay. Um, just the last week of February, Katie.
That second week, I could do 10, 11, 12 only. And then.
Not, not first two weeks. So the first week?
The first week I'm here, second week I could do 10, 11, 12. And I may not even have internet during the 17th. Okay. And when, when do you not have internet?
20, 21, it looks like.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm retired. So I'm going to be spending three weeks in Florida. So, you know, I think I'm virtual.
You would be okay.
I would, yeah, because unless we do it the week of the 17th, we're back by then.
Okay.
But I'm okay being virtual.
But I have, I have two people who are not okay the week of the 17th, correct? So, okay, okay.
Yeah, we'll be that way.
You're good. Steve, you're also. Steve, are you there?
Yeah, I can make those times work.
The week of the, the 10, 11, 12 or the week before?
Yeah, as of now. Yeah, as of now.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we're gonna put them in our calendars and hold them, right? Kevin? I see you unmuted, but I don't hear anything. Still can't hear you. Do you want to put it in the chat or text me? Because we can't hear you. Jimmy?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, that's fine. I'm good. Well, I say I'm good. I'm not in charge of my schedule. That's my wife's job, but I think that's good.
Okay, you'll have to tell her you have things. Thank you, Kevin. Good, good for you. Great. Okay. Okay. So I think. If we want to do a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we can do 10, 11, 12. And if we want to do different days of the week, we'll have to do the first week of February. And with the school board meeting on then. We'll move. Can you just repeat the time commitment for those days?
Three hours in the evening.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say, I would say it's probably three and a half hours in the evening, but it can be whatever.
Three and a, four hours, four hours.
So what time we start, what time are we starting?
Well, we would start at 5:30 or 6:00 probably, right?
Hank? Yeah. Oh, man.
Whatever, whatever works for you. So 5:30, 6:00.
Yeah. Okay, so. Is a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday enough? Or do we need to do it the week before where we, like Hank, you said three days, three consecutive days should be enough?
So three days of interviews is enough. Sorry, three days, three days of interviews is enough. However, we also want. The debrief time. So what we usually do is we do three days and then the next day. Is kind of, okay, what are, where are we going with that? And sometimes that's the next morning or sometimes it's, it can be the weekend. So there needs to be another day. It doesn't have to necessarily be the very next day. Where the board can get together. And again, virtual, if we're doing virtual for interviews, we certainly can do virtual for this next meeting. But that's when you're going to come together as a team and decide, do you have, do you have a top candidate or not? So if people are not available at all, like starting on Thursday, the 13th, and that, that would make more sense than to move it to the previous week.
So can I make a proposal and folks let me know if this works for a few people? If we do the fourth, fifth and sixth of February, so the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and have debrief time if we have three candidates on the eighth on Saturday. Is that, and not rather than a Friday night and the day. So it would be Tuesday, the fourth, Wednesday, the fifth, Thursday, the sixth. And then rather than meeting Friday evening, do it some, at some Saturday midday-ish, or we'd find some time on Saturday to do the debrief? Or would folks rather just do Friday evening?
Why can't we do the 13th, 10th, 11th, 12th for the interviews on 13th for debrief?
Are you available for debrief on the 13th?
Oh, because you're going to be gone?
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
I, I'd prefer not to do Saturday as all possible.
Okay.
Um.
Could be doing it on the Monday.
Yeah, the Monday. Sure. Yep. We could do that.
Yeah, so we can live with our thoughts.
Yeah. And then we. I'm sorry, what was?
Five or six.
Let, let's book starting at five, but we might move it as we get closer. Book starting at 5:30, Hank? We usually have our board meetings starting at 6:30.
Is that a question?
That's a question for you.
Do folks want to end at 6:30 to 9:30? Is that too late?
I'm so, I, I'm gonna, this is Katie Nelson. And with early. Like, I just feel like I start losing steam after nine.
So start at?
Yeah, I would rather, I know it's hard and I don't have like the constraints of transitioning from work to home. But it's, I, I just know that I won't be as productive.
Okay.
That way.
So for the folks who do have that transition, is starting at 5:30 too hard?
You're okay?
Starting 5:30 reasonable? If I don't hear anything, I'm going to assume so remote. So Steve, Jimmy, Kevin. Steve, 5:30 is good. Jimmy, 5:30?
Good.
Yeah.
That was a good, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm unreliable at 5:30.
Unreliable or reliable?
I'm unreliable. I, I work kind of West Coast hours, most, most weekdays, so it's kind of hard.
So what, what time are you reliable?
6:30, yeah, but.
Okay, and then also I.
I can try to make it work. I just can't, you know, can't commit right now that far out, but you asked.
I did, that's why I'm asking.
Katie Nelson, again, are, can it's cool with that timing too? I'm just, I don't know how normal that is for people to, or amongst education. You know, in that realm of interviewing, Hank?
Yeah. So, so here's what they, here's what, since we're going there, let's talk about what that, those days look like. You're going to spend the first hour, remember, I, remember, I described, you're going to have this sort of bounty of information and you're going to prepare. Your specific questions for each candidate. So you need an hour to prep. That's your prep time. So if we start, let's just arguably say we start at 5:30. I'm not lobbying for that, but if we start at 5:30. From 5:30 to 6:30, you as a board are working on what are your questions? Candidate comes in at 6:30, leaves at 8:30. Again, we can tweak this a little bit. 6:30, 8:30 is, I think, perfectly reasonable as sitting superintendent.
Yeah.
Those hours. That's still, we have time to get back to their hotel if they're coming from out of town. And then that last hour and probably it's more like a half hour. So let's say 8:30 to nine is the board. Debriefing the candidate that they just experienced and then you're done. So that's what a.
Okay.
Yeah, would look like.
I'm sorry, and that was a start, 5:30 starting or 6:30 starting? That was 5:30. Okay, 6:30 to 8:30 interview. Five. So and then we push it back to 6:30 would be at 7:30 to 9:30 interview. Yep. Yeah, I think 5:30 is best. Yep.
So Kevin, if we end up doing that, you're going to do prep at a different time and share information with me and I will give you the question that you're going to ask. You trust me, right?
Yeah, or I'll try to attend if I don't trust you.
Okay. Everyone will know. I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Why do we need an hour to prep? Like, why couldn't we hash out questions? Not on the same day, like the week before? We have a quick meeting where we hash out questions. Like, is the expectation we're asking different questions?
Yes, different questions to each panelist. So.
Some of that information that you're going to use, you're only going to get a couple of days before telephone reference calls or panel material. Like, you're not going to have that two weeks ahead of time. So you really do need that time to come together and to figure it out.
I guess I've just never been in an interview where. I've been asked to ask different questions to different people. It's always been, you have to keep your questions standard across the board to be equitable.
Right.
So this is, is a change.
Yeah. And only because we've done so many earlier interviews that have been scripted, do I feel comfortable allowing that, if you will? Yeah. Are we, are we, did we settle on dates? I, the last thing I wrote down was the fourth, fifth, sixth and the 10th to deliberate. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's, if we can, let's go with that. And I think we have some sense around time, start time, but. I'll. Unless you want to zero in on that right now and just confirm that it's whatever you said it was. Do you want to do that or?
I'm sending, I'm sending invitations to meetings as we speak. We made a decision, we're moving on. Does that work for folks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's much better for to be on my calendar.
Right.
All right.
Going to take it.
Great job, board. Okay, so I told you at the beginning that our biggest agenda item would be the one we just did, which it was. And I want to do a time check. I, I believe you have scheduled to go tonight until, is it 8:30 Eastern? Am I right?
Roughly. Yeah, roughly.
Yeah, okay.
Get through, I think we will actually get through the agenda. So let's.
Can you swap to the other? Thank you.
Yeah, super, thank you. Okay, so let's pick this up and let's talk about. So in our proposal, as a reminder, we have a high value that the work of the search, legwork falls onto the consultants. We are not a search firm that expects staff to shoulder the great majority of the work. That's our job, that's why you're paying us to do. There are a few times that we do need staff support, and they specifically fall into three categories. So I want to outline those three and get clarity about who that person or persons are to help. The first one is just about logistics and communication flow. What does that mean? That means, you know, if there's a meeting, if it's in person, that's the person setting up the room. If maybe we're dealing with Zoom links, I'll also use that person to sometimes distribute information out to the board at large. This is often, doesn't have to be, but is often the executive assistant to the board who serves in that, serves in that capacity. Let me, actually, I'm gonna go through all three, and then you can tell me who's who, or you can talk about it. So that's the first one. The second one is the focus groups. This is, still, we're gonna talk about number six, but I want you to hearken back to the early part of the search when we're setting up the 15 focus groups, individuals who are going to inform us about the district. There is logistic work around figuring out who those people are and scheduling them. I need somebody to take on that role in-house. That is often, but doesn't have to be the executive assistant to the superintendent board as well. And then, thirdly, the communications peak, both in terms of sending out information to your public and also to keep your website up to date with what's happening with the superintendent search, because your community wants to know and they need a place that they can go to. And we'll work with that person to make, you know, to help them. They'll be crafting the information. That person should attend our board meetings and maybe our HR committee meetings as well, because they need to be in the know as to what's happening. All right, so those are three roles I need some help with.
It's gonna be Mary and me. Okay, so Rebecca and Mary are gonna be the staff support for those things. Rebecca's here, Mary is not, but Rebecca will be the conduit.
Yes. Mary Radigan, she's been copied on some of the communication, Hank.
Say that last part, Rebecca.
Yep, Mary Radigan is her name, and she's been copied on some of the communication that we've had.
Yeah. Perfect. Okay, thank you. I know I'm in really good hands with Rebecca and Mary. Okay, awesome. All right, let's move on to a different kind of communication. Two different kinds. Let's first talk about board. Let's talk about the fact that this is high stakes in your community. People will want to be involved, people will want their opinion known. And there's a path by which folks inform the process. And really, the path, so if I'm Joe Q. Public in Mount Mansfield, and I want to let the board know what I think they should focus on, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that engagement piece, whether it's the survey or whether it's a focus group, or whether it's the community engagement, working on the kind of writing in surveys. There is a process to do that. What is not gonna work is for individuals to speak directly to board members. Now, if you get an email from Joe Q. Public about, here's what I think the board should be involved in, you may do what you want with that, recognizing that I'm gonna provide you with a body of work. But where it really becomes an issue is when it comes to candidates. So although we're not advertising who the candidates are, you're going, there's just a natural tendency for people to want to lobby you, board members. They're gonna either say, hey, so-and-so is going to apply, they're amazing. Or, board, somebody needs to go talk to so-and-so in the next district and poach them. Or they're gonna say, whoever you hire, make sure it's not this person. So you're going to, I assume, are you gonna get those? I mean, in Mount Mansfield, do people do, do people email board members with that kind of, does that happen? It does in a lot of communities.
It does.
Okay. So your easy response to all of those is, here's Hank Harris' and Kathleen's email address. We are using a search firm, please use them. I do not want you, board members, to get, to engage with individuals about candidates. It puts you in a bad position, and it's not super fair to candidates too, to sort of have that happen. And so we become the clearinghouse of that information. It's also possible that a well-intentioned candidate will call you up and say, hey, I'm thinking about applying for the Mount Mansfield Superintendency. Can I grab a few minutes with you? Or can I, and I'm gonna be in the neighborhood, I'm driving into Vermont, northern Vermont, can we get coffee? There might be a temptation from you to want to do that, because you're a good person and you want to meet people and you want to be a resource, because you know a lot about the district. So I'm here to ask not to engage in any of those, just in the interest of fairness, that people shouldn't have the opportunity to have one-offs with board members. And so that might be a very well-intentioned candidate. If a candidate calls me and says, hey, can I talk to a board member? Or can I call the principal? I tell them, no, no, you can't. Can I visit Mount Mansfield? Sure, you sure can. Go sit in a cafe and talk to members of the public, you can do that. But you can't go into a candidate, you can't go into the school and ask to see the principal, and you can't go call board members and have coffee with them. And so I'm asking board for you, and I can't see you all, but I'm just gonna ask that you nod, that you're okay with that, and that you just pass all of those, and I see a thumbs up, thank you. You pat, and don't hesitate to send those to Kathleen. I mean, that's what we're here for. Okay, great. So I'm gonna assume everybody's good with that. If you have any questions about that, let me know. The other piece to communication is this. So some, so sometimes you might want to ask a question about, to me or Kathleen, about the process, and you totally can. If it's, if it's like, if it's of any substance, if it's of any substance, our process is that if you send an email to me, hey, I'm thinking that maybe this isn't the right, or whatever, we will reply all, to all board members. So that just, I do that for reasons. One is it's fair, and two is, just in terms of your board responsibilities, you need to have access to same information. The other piece is, and you tell me if you might have a different protocol. That's the protocol we typically use. Every state has different laws around open records. It's not my first time doing a Vermont search, but it's only my second time. So I might not know everything there is to know. But the second piece would be, let's play that out again. You send, one of you sends an email to me asking a question. I respond to, with a reply all, and you still have more questions that you want to ask. In that case, we don't want to have a back and forth email conversation, because that becomes a public record, and it really becomes a public meeting, which we have to warn. And we haven't warned anybody that we're gonna have this email back. But we don't want to get into this not quite lawful conversation that's well-intentioned but doesn't meet the law. And so if there's something that you feel like we need to talk about, I'm gonna ask that you reach out to Edie as your board chair and say, Edie, can we, can we agendize this? Because that's where public conversations, public meetings must by law go. I'm looking at the faces that I see, and I see nodding. So I think, I think there's agreement. So let me just repeat that. If you have a question for me, you're welcome to email me. If I respond, I will respond to all board members. And if it needs to go further than that, then go to Edie and agendize something, rather than a, we don't want a back and forth. Okay. Great. Let's move. I'm gonna assume there's no questions. Item number five is open session, executive session norms. Typically, when we are engaged in the executive session conversations with the board, we do not expect any staff to be present for this work. So I want to put that out there. I know in some districts, key members of senior staff are present in executive sessions. Our executive sessions with the full board is really going to be about the interview, the board interviews, and the board deliberation. That's really where our executive session work with you is going to be, and we would typically not include staff in there.
Yeah, we occasionally invite people into executive session, but normally it is only the full board. So that, that fits with our process.
Great, okay. Thank you. We are now up to item number six. This is the focus groups. So this is the first part of the process. We're going back in time. This is a September body of work. I mentioned, just as a reminder, there's a community survey goes out, and there's 15 focus groups. I think this is the work of the HR committee to identify exactly who the 15 groups are. And if you need some extra groups, if it's really warranted, we can certainly add some. But I want the whole board looking at this. And I want to give you a path toward making some, I don't think now is the moment for us to figure out who exactly the 15 are. But I want you to take a look at this, because I also want you to, if you feel strongly that there's certain groups or certain individuals that should be included in the focus groups, I'm gonna invite you, I don't know if that's emailing Rebecca or emailing Edie and Tara, I don't know who's the right conduit, but I think it's the HR committee that will ultimately decide that. But I want the board to have a path to inform that process if you want. Okay, so as you think about that, if you look at that top list of highly recommended, I want to walk through just a few pieces of this, so this makes sense. Remember, there were two objectives we have in our engagement phase. One is to learn about the dreams and aspirations of your community at large, so that we can develop a set of criteria to bring to you in October. That's one of our objectives. And the second objective is for us to really learn your district deeply and well enough so that we can represent you well when we go out recruiting candidates, and we can talk about the district knowledgeably. And these focus groups, while they meet both criteria, they're kind of, I shouldn't use the word criteria, because I'm using that in another sense. While these 15 focus groups will hit both outcomes, they're kind of more toward that second outcome of really allowing us to get into the understanding of Mount Mansfield. To that extent, we certainly want some time with your sitting superintendent, who's in the role and has been for many years. So that would seem to be a no-brainer that we want to talk to him. We want these groups to be small, five or six individuals tops. And senior leaders of the organization also have a really deep understanding of the totality of the organization. And therefore, we typically will want to break those groups, the senior leadership, into a couple of different cohorts. Again, these are recommendations, and you know your district better than we do, far better than we do, and you also know the players. So this is what we would be looking toward, but ultimately, we want you, or in this case, the HR committee, to make these decisions. You have enough principals, and principals know the organization really well, although they know it from their principal perspective mostly. We don't want all the principals in the room. At the same time, they have way too much information, and so splitting it by level makes sense. Union leadership should make sense. We do typically invite employees, and this could be by invitation or lottery, to participate. Now, employees won't necessarily have the broadest perspective. I mean, if you're a classroom teacher and you've been one for 10 years, you have a really deep understanding of the work, but it might be more local, right? But those are important stories for us to hear as well. And so what we usually do, and that should not say capped at 12, I apologize. That should say capped at 6. Sorry, I don't know where my head was when I put that together. So we want some opportunities for folks who worked in the district on the front, on the, on the front end to participate as well. That can be by invitation or by lottery. Parent leaders for sure, community leaders typically, and we would want at least one group of students. Again, even though it says highly recommended, so it is a recommendation. And then we have other options to consider, and some of these might be more appropriate in the Mount Mansfield context. So it's up for you to decide. And so what I would say, I want to just take a moment to answer any questions you might have. But then I would ask board members to, and I'm gonna ask Edie, should they communicate? If a board member thinks, oh, this one group's really important, or even this individual plays a really important role in the district and must be included, should they email you directly, Edie? Should they email Rebecca? Should it be somebody else?
Yeah, email me directly and in the subject line, tell me what it is, so that I can put them all together, so as I get them, and we'll talk about it in the HR committee. That way, there won't be open meeting law problems. So I'll just, yeah.
Okay.
If you're on the, you'll be part of the discussion.
Questions? Or? Okay.
I think we're, yeah, good, Hank.
Okay. Beautiful. Edie, I'm gonna be reaching, we do need to, I don't know when our next HR committee meeting is, but we probably need to schedule one if we don't have one coming up soon. So I'll reach out to you, thinking about, I can see. Internal candidates is, is simply this. In 95% of searches, the board would like us to have a similar process for all candidates, regardless of their internal or external. In other words, if somebody who is currently an employee of Mount Mansfield decides they want to apply for the superintendency, they would go through the same process and be held to the same standards. That would mean, for instance, if somebody doesn't automatically get an interview just because they are currently staff at Mount Mansfield. That's our recommendation, doesn't have to be that way. I want to just put that out there, and if there's any reason to think that it should not be a single process for all candidates, now would be the moment to, without naming names, please, of course. We're not gonna name any names here, but if you think there should be something different, then please let me know.
This is the recommendation from the HR committee also.
Wonderful. Okay, finalist process, we believe we've, we've already spoken to, so I think we can check that off the list. Salary range for the new superintendent. So we're gonna keep, I don't have any data to give you, we're not ready for that conversation. Here's how that typically works. Our HR team, AKA Rebecca, will gather superintendent salaries from across the state of Vermont, which thankfully for Vermont is actually available. I'm gonna ask Rebecca to send that to me, and I'm going to come to the HR committee. And once I have that data and make a recommendation, and Rebecca, I will want your wisdom in that too. So, so we'll come together and bring a recommendation to the HR. I think it's appropriate for the HR committee to make that recommendation about what is the salary range for the new superintendent. Once, and that's at the early end of the process, that's before we even start recruiting, we need to be able to say, what's the range? Of course, the very end of the process is when you are actually negotiating a contract, is when you get specific about not only salary, but, you know, other questions. Is there moving expenses? Is there something else? But in terms of establishing a salary, it would be our process that I'd recommend. Questions?
I think we're good.
Good, all right. Ooh, we might, I shouldn't jinx myself.
Oh, before, before you say that.
I should have just said it.
Yeah. No, I, I don't want to get into specifics either, but I, I, I did have a comment in terms of the, the timing regarding the draft contract. I don't, I don't think it needs to, you know, salary is a big part of it, but I, I would like to have enough time for us to work a, a new contract, because the contract that we have has obviously been worked for, for like 15 years or so. And I don't think it's, I don't, I, I think it could be a fair amount of good work to do in advance of that, you know, last couple of weeks or month where we're ready to, to sign. I'd like to start working on that sooner than later.
Yeah, great. I think that's doable.
Is that fair, Edie?
That is fair. Yep.
Ready to move on?
Ready. Ready.
Yep, thanks.
Well, advertising, so advertising is an interesting, we don't recommend spending a whole lot of money on advertising. How do people find out about this job? Most people are going to find about it, out about it, I think, through one of three ways, all of which are free. School spring is free to you, right? You can post on school spring for free, right?
Yes.
And that's where people in Vermont are going to find out about it and they're going to look at it. It's not free?
Well, I think we're there for an account, right?
You have a license for the year, right?
No extra cost.
No extra cost. We, our team, our consulting team has a list serve that hits 40,000 subscribers and has really good readership. We typically have 30, at least 30% open rate on our 40,000, which means, you know, 12,000, 14,000 people are looking at the email, and the email is specifically about your role. And in fact, we're going to do two from Mount Mansfield, because it's early enough in the year, June, in the next few weeks, and say, hey, heads up, this is coming. And then we'll do another one when the job gets announced, also free to you. And the third way is, is our, is our non-advertising way, which is we are reaching out to people across the country and very much, of course, regionally as well, since there's a very good chance that folks from Vermont are going to be the folks who are interested. And that's our, that's our, just our recruiting process of calling people to find out who they know, to find out who they know, to find out your next great leader, also free to you. So why might you spend money? You don't have to, but one thing that sometimes districts want to do is they do want to advertise in a national publication. The two big national publications are Education Week and AASA, which is the Superintendents' Association. They have really good readership. Their advertisements, they have a whole bunch of different sort of options from highlighted or, or, you know, sending blasting out, if you've ever posted a job for your company, you probably have seen those sort of multiple options. Typically, if you're going to do that, I would say expect to pay between $800 and $1,000. So that would be an option if you wanted. I will tell you that it is rare, because we ask in the application process, where did you learn about this job? And it's very rare that the person who gets the superintendency learned about it through AASA or Education Week. I'm not going to say it never happens, I'm going to say it's, it's not, it's very rare. That said, I can't guarantee where the next one is coming from, and sometimes districts want, want their name out there in the, in the national press, and so, you know, let's just sort of go on the high end, that could be a thousand bucks if you want to invest in that. There's also the 802, I don't know if you're familiar with the 802 newsletter, and that can be advertised, and the key charge is 500 bucks. So, so I don't know if you want to talk about this, I don't know if you want to defer to the HR committee, I don't know if people have strong opinions or not, I'll, I'll just...
I'm going to recommend that that's a HR committee discussion, and if anybody has strong opinions, shoot me a note and I'll share it with the committee. Reasonable? Great. Okay.
Okay, super. Number 11 is residency expectation. So it used to be many years ago, where it was almost always the case that if any district hired a superintendent, there was an expectation that that person live within the geography of the school district. It's no longer as sacred a thing. Typically, boards would like their new superintendent to live in the jurisdiction of the Mount Mansfield district, but there's, there's reasons why people might not be able to. If somebody was moving from another state or another region to take your job, one might expect they would live in the jurisdiction. But if somebody already lives in a neighboring jurisdiction and your kids go to school in a neighboring jurisdiction, do they really have to sell their house and move to your jurisdiction to be your superintendent? Boards are kind of like, we'd like them to live in our jurisdiction, but I guess if they can't, they can't. And so, but there are boards that have said to me, no, they must live in the jurisdiction. So, and Edie, I'm going to start with you, and I don't know if that's, this is also more for the HR committee or the board at home, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, I don't know that we have a residency expectation at all, like we, you know, our current superintendent doesn't live in the district, most superintendents don't live in their district because everything is so small and close, they like to be able to not bump into people everywhere they go, so that they can actually get away from work when they're not at work. So I don't know that that's a thing, but if anybody has a thing and wants to talk about it, let's talk about it. Like, not tonight, but we'll take you to the committee. So I think that's, yeah.
Okay.
That fair, Hank?
Yeah, and I was not aware that John does not live in your jurisdiction, so that must give you some comfort that it's, it still works and it works well, even if it's a neighbor.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's an hour and a half from the north end to the south end of our district drive, and so a lot of people are commuting 45 minutes-ish in to just to teach, just to work in the district, to do other things. So I, you know, that's not unreasonable in this area. People commute longer than that and that's not unreasonable.
Okay. Great. The last item is really an, more an FYI than, I don't know that you need to make a decision right now. Also, this is something that's changed over the last several years. You certainly want to do a background check, and by background check, I mean, it just occurred to me, my pauses, it occurred to me, I wanted to talk about telephone reference checks. I think I'm going to do that right now, even though that doesn't really fall under this category, I think I left that out of an earlier conversation. Let's use this moment to talk about that. Can we pull up, can we pull up the schedule again, please? The timeline?
Jeff is on it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, the, the other timeline.
There we go. Okay, folks, I want to draw your attention to the second half and the board initial interviews. It's the third row down in the second part, the 2025 part. And you'll recall, you might recall that I said, let's hypothetically say that the initial interviews are on January 28th, and at the end of the day, the HR committee has identified your three finalists, and that there's a lot of stuff that goes into finalist interviews and finalist week. And we now know that finalist interviews are going to be on February 4th, 5th and 6th. One of the bodies of work that needs to happen before February 4th, 5th and 6th is telephone reference calls on your finalists. The way we do telephone reference calls, now you might also, if you're a careful listener, you might have also remembered that I also said way earlier, before the, during the preliminary interviews, we consultants will do one telephone reference call. So there's two stages of telephone reference calls. The first one, in the early stage with consultants, is we're calling one person, and this is somebody that the candidate has identified that we can call. We usually get really positive results, not always surprisingly, but we usually get pretty good. And the difference we're looking for is between good and amazing. Okay, but that's not what I'm talking to you about now. I'm talking to you about now we have three finalists, and we have maybe a 10 to 12 day period, and we want to do a large number of reference checks on each finalist, and we're not interested in calling their best friends and the people that love them the most. We want to get a broad perspective of people who have worked with these candidates and not look at a list they give us, but rather, we go to the finalist, and we, okay, finalist, I want to talk to your CFO, and I've looked it up on the website, I already know who the names of these people. I want to talk Joe Smith, your CFO, and Jill Collins, your Director of Special Ed, and I go through the list and I say, these are the people we want to talk to. And they're going to say, well, I thought this was a confidential search. Yes, and so when you tell these people that I'm calling them, please tell them that we're not publicly revealing the names of the finalists, so please keep that discreet, but we want to get a broad perspective of the people that we work with. That's how we do it, and we want our board members to play a really key role. In fact, we want our board members to make those telephone reference calls. We will prep you for that, we will give you the names of people, we'll give you the prompts, we'll teach you how to do it. There's 15 of you, which is amazing. There's no obligation requirement that all of you do one, but I would like most of you to be willing to do one. I'm not asking you tonight to tell me if you are or not, I just want to put that out there, that that's a really important part of the process, and it's a part that we think is best done at that point by a board member. And, and our responses, then the board members who engage in that find that really valuable. Okay, I'm just saying that, I'm not calling for volunteers right now, I just want to sort of like, give you the heads up that that's something I'll be asking for in January. Questions on that? Okay, excellent. So now, let's go back to our agenda. So in addition to telephone reference checks, once we get to the finalist stage, we do, we recommend that, highly recommend that you engage in investigative agency to do a background check, a telephone reference check. So a background check is going to, everything from criminal records, court records, ensuring that their transcripts are accurately reflect the universities that they went to, all of those things. And that's something that's beyond our ability as recruiters, so we contract, we subcontract with an investigative agency. It has been, if 10 or 15 years ago, when we did searches, boards would often do a background check on their lone finalist, on the one person, and they'd keep their fingers crossed that everything turned out great, and usually it did. And we live in an era right now, and it would probably be unwise to do your background check only on your finalist, your, your top person, because if that doesn't turn out to be what you want it to be, it's kind of late in the game to go back to people that you've interviewed and said, hey, you came in second or third, right? So I say that because these are, these are not inexpensive products. There's, there's a different range, but cheapest one, I believe, is $1,100 per background check. I want to give you a heads up right now that it would be my recommendation that you do one per finalist and not one on your final, final person. Ultimately, that's the board's decision, but I just wanted to put that out there so that you know that that's a cost and that if there's any concerns, we could talk about that now.
Okay. No questions. I didn't bring chocolate to keep everybody awake, Hank, but I think you're doing okay.
I'm, I might give you the gift of time, I might return 17 minutes to you. That's it. Number 13, is there anything else you feel like you don't know that you want to know or anything I should know?
Yeah, I think, I, this has been really thorough, I think this has been really helpful. I have two things that I want to say. One of them is, as a board, we're going to do as much as we possibly can in open session, and as a committee, HR committee, we're going to be, do as much as we possibly can in open session, and that's based on Hank and Kathleen's recommendation, so that as many people can follow along with what we're doing and how we're doing it as possible. There will, however, be things that we do in executive session, and anything that puts us at a competitive disadvantage in hiring, you know, any discussions along those lines will be done in executive session. So if you have questions, there might be times where the HR committee is holding information that we can't share. You know, and there might be times for the community that the full board is holding information that we can't share, because, especially, because we have two districts budding ours that are also looking for superintendents at the same time that we are. So just to give everyone that context for this as well. Thought that was, yeah, we danced around it a little bit, but I wanted to be really explicit on that tonight also. And we have a board schedule for the year that was recently sent out, and very clearly, this year is going to be spent a lot, the board will be spending a lot of time on this search, right? The HR committee, of course, but the board will as well, so that we will be moving things around on that calendar of, of schedule for the year. So I just wanted to be upfront with folks on that as well. Anything else? Anybody else have anything that, that Hank should know, that the community should know while we're? No?
I have a quick thought.
Yeah.
Just circling back to some of the communication coming from the district, it's Katie Nelson, Hank, sorry. Are we going to have a part of our website that's dedicated to this, so we can direct people there where all of the reports, sort of like how we had the budget, we didn't want anybody to have to dig through to find information, so all the, I don't know, you want the HR videos, but all of our...
Jeff, is that possible, to have a page? Great, great. So yeah, so we can put this timeline, all of that, so that people can click through this recording, have all of that, it's a great call.
Yeah, I would get that set up, rather than later, yeah.
Yes, this week, ideally? Yeah. Great.
Super.
Other, anything else? Abby, do you have anything? I know that I've kind of jumped in at the end. Or do you want to introduce yourself to Hank while you're here?
Oh, sure, yeah. I'm Abby O'Malley, I am the senior student rep on the board this year.
I'm so glad you're here, and I saw you on the website, so I was hoping you'd be here. And is, did you say you go by Abby?
Yes, Abby.
Abby, super nice to meet you and looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, great to meet you as well. Thank you, Edie.
Sure. And we will be having a junior, so Abby's a senior this year, and every year we have a junior and a senior as board members, so we will have another student board rep joining us in the next month.
Great.
Okay, if no one has anything else for Hank, you have something else for Ronald? Then we can say thank you, and we will be in touch soon about an HR committee meeting, like probably I'll text you tonight, so we can touch base and get, yeah, get that organized and figured out.
Super.
Great. Okay, so thank you so much, really appreciate you going through that with everyone. Think we can move on to other business then, unless, yeah?
Thank you all. See you soon.
You're both a morning and an evening person.
Yes. I am only a morning person because I have to, but yes, that is about it. And I think my family would say I am not a morning person, so let's go with that. All right, so other business, does anyone have any other business? I'm not seeing any other business, and any, no committees have any reporting, because this is our... Okay. Then, thank you. Our next school board meeting, our next full board meeting is September 9th. Oh, Monday, the 9th, I believe, I hope. And it is going to be at Mount Mansfield High School, so I just want to be really clear on that. Community engagement.
It is that morning.
Is the morning, okay, also on the 9th in the morning? Okay. Finance and facilities on the 19th is what I have here. Okay, 6:00 PM in the evening, virtual. HR committee might have a meeting on Wednesday, but if we missed the, if we missed the notification deadline, then we will be rescheduling that, so we'll figure that out early in the morning. That's my guess, it's going to have to get rescheduled, but we'll figure that out. I think that's it. Yes? All right, it's, oh, we didn't vote, probably we need to vote on, going back on that superintendent search. The board does approve the process that was laid out tonight. So I guess, you're moving that we approve that process? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Steve, Jimmy, you good with that?
I'm good.
Great. Yes, great.
I'm good as well.
Great, so that's unanimous, so no, okay, awesome. Sorry that I missed that, but if I could get a motion to adjourn, we can adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Heather. Let's throw you second. Great, thanks. All in favor, give me an aye and click off, and nice to see all of you, and have a great evening.